All right, I am going to call this town council meeting for September 22nd, 2020 to order seven o'clock. We can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Republic One Nation Under God Indivisible And if we could just take a moment for a moment of silence in honor of our Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Gainsborough who passed away, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. That gets us to number four, Proclamations and Presentations. We have none this this meeting. Public participation communications and public petitions on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council to a minute limit. If you would like to speak, please raise your in your honor device, please raise your hand. If you are calling in, it's star nine on your phone. When you raise your hand, I will call on you and order. And you have to state your name and address. So if anybody would like to speak, please raise their hand. Not seeing anybody, we will go on to number six. We have no public hearing items tonight. Seven A is reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Brenda, do you have anything?
Yes, for the Central Region Tourism Commission, I am creating a brochure for the entire central region that has to do with Monays, walking tours, visiting historic houses and a few other items. And we're hoping to have that brochure finished by the end of the month. I also reached out to the town manager to take a look at creating a Facebook page specifically for tourism and hospitality for talent. Taking a look at many of our surrounding towns and taking a look even at the recommendations that were for the four town equity plan. It was something that we should be taking a look at and that's easy. It's low hanging fruit, as Heidi would say. It's something that's very easy to accomplish and pull together because we pretty much have all the information. We just need to create the page and then start adding content. So I'm looking forward to that. I think it's also a great way to highlight and highlight our local economy and try helping out some of the smaller businesses, especially the restaurants. Get an uptick in business. So and that's it for tourism.
Thank you. Okay, that gets us to seven B, reports of town council liaisons. Back to you, Brenda.
Blake Committee meeting was canceled, land acquisition hasn't met. Planning and zoning, we had a meeting last Monday and there was a public hearing scheduled, but it's been moved because of technical issues. And we also had our consultants talk about the technology campus zone, about the regulations there, about what may or may not fit for talent. So it and that was something that the P O C D had highlighted and need to do. It was very in-depth presentation. I suggest people take a look at it. And we should see some good suggestions coming up the next time Dr. Don is available. So keep your eyes open.
Thank you. Cassandra?
You did, sorry about that. Permanent Celebration Committee is doing their scarecrow contest and Tammy, you clarified, but it's for businesses only. So they're just trying to highlight businesses and have that as a scarecrow competition on the green. Some of the details have been shared extensively by the Permanent Celebration Committee on Facebook and for people to access. And I think it was also sent out as an email. And then Board of Education, Tammy, you were on that meeting talking a lot. The biggest thing of that meeting though was the mental health initiative and there's a lot of discussion on that. And Tammy, you were, you probably want to expand on that more than I can, but that was the biggest part of this that they were trying to figure out if they're going to set up something, a mental health initiative, and there's some pushback, whether it's the right time or if they have the right people there and how that's going to all work out. And so like I said, Tammy, you might want to expand on that. They went over, you know, budget numbers and talking about a little bit more of like COVID-19 and how things are going to evolve as the year goes on. I know a lot of the other towns have expanded, opened it up to full time. And that's, I think, something that our schools are thinking about, but it's still on the table.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, Steve Jones. So on the ninth of September, there was a Water Commission meeting, which was in regards to contract negotiations. So that was a pretty short meeting. On the 10th, there was a Conservation Committee Commission meeting where they awarded the photo and poetry contest winners, I believe each $50 gift cards for their photos and one poem, as well as reviewed their goals and they discussed the Full Moon Hike on October 30th and those plans. In addition to that, just as an aside, they did, I believe, raise around $100 to $130 from the star party last weekend. It was attended by, I believe, 80 to 90 people. It was it was still distanced, but it was a very successful event. And I think they're hoping that might be a great kickoff towards other properties that could be utilized for starting meeting events in the future. And they have a lot of volunteers that help with that. Let's see what else. The and then on the 14th, there was the Library Foundation meeting. They went over their budget. They sent their letter to us, the council requesting attendance or audience at a meeting next month to go over their annual presentation to the town. They approved their general liability and D and O insurance, maintained their investor or their wealth management company, as well as approved some funding for one program called Tumble Books, which they're hoping to coordinate with T I S to help provide reading materials to K through six children, as well as the $450 to pay for half of a two hour Zoom panel discussion on kind of race, race related issues and equity related issues. And those types of topics that'll be hosted by three UConn professors from, or not UConn, Central, Western and Southern University. And finally, I believe they're still ongoing with their talent oral history proposal. So they're reaching out to local authors and historians to new gathering materials and that might be a larger presentation next year at the library when it's safer to do so. And then on the 10th of September, let's see, oh, sorry, jumping over here to the 21st, there was the Water Commission meeting. They went over their annual numbers. They had a new member in in place, Dan Tortollet, who attended. They kind of gave a background of the history. And then there was continued negotia discussions of contract negotiations. There is one new service, Norwegian Woods is finally hooked up and should start flowing through the the coffers and the usage of the Talon Water System. They don't expect too much revenue from that, but it's certainly an addition that is appreciated. And I believe that covers it for me. If anyone has any questions, feel free.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. The W P C A did meet on September 15th. I wasn't able to attend that meeting, but I did review the minutes. And I can give you a brief update. It was a quick meeting and just a couple of items of note. Director of Public Works said that there's nothing new to report on the 30 property, which I'm sure a lot of us have seen as we drive through there, but nothing new to report. And then the College View project. Scott had mentioned the last time that there was a problem with one of the contractors and they had laid most of the pipe at an incorrect pitch and that needed to be dug up and reset to correct pitch. And he said that he was out at the site and there were five feet of water and no one on the site. So he'll continue, continue to update us on what's going on with that project. And then finally, there was an update from Rob Grasses, who is the Chair Chairman of the Vernon W P C A on the Vernon Sewer upgrade. And nothing really new to report there, other than the fact that it's it's been slowed down as a result of the COVID-19 virus. So things are moving along, but just more slowly than they had anticipated. And that's it.
Thank you. Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That the Virtual Building Committee did meet, that we did get an update on deconstruction. Deconstruction is moving along very quickly. And there've been no, no issues that the the entire roof is up, that they are working on the exterior walls. They hope to have everything as far as they dry out, where the walls are all constructed so that they can begin interior construction before the weather hits. That very impressed with with how much they've done and how far they've come along since just a few months ago. That, of course, asked specifically if we're on track and on budget. The the answer was by the by the contractor, as well as by the chair, that that we are on track and that we are on budget, that there was no projected request for any additional funds at this point or any variances. That things seem to be going along, you know, at this point smoothly. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the Agricultural Commission meeting was scheduled for last night and that was canceled. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board did meet last Monday and, or two Mondays ago, rather. And they had a visitor from the Chair of the Conservation Commission came and spoke with them about potentially integrating their new bike, mountain bike plot of land with Crandall Park. Steve, you probably know the name of the of the New England Mountain Bike Society. I'm not sure if that's it, but
Yeah, number, yep, you're right.
So and they're expressed interest in perhaps expanding into Crandall. There's a way to get from the piece of property adjacent to 74 to Crandall. So that was discussed and that's something that they'll look in. It might be a new addition to Crandall in the coming months and years, probably years, but that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, I had Board of Education. As Cassandra said, one of the things that that came up, we talked about let's see, they're going to put it on their next agenda, I believe, to wrap up any concerns that they had. Not this one, but the next one. And overall, the majority of the feedback was good. They thought it was good. Quite a couple of people definitely expressed interesting being involved. There was talk about it coincided nicely with the LGBTQ population and systemic racism. It also, there was some questions about, they wanted to understand the history of the L P C or how they got that and how we got the L P C and where we were currently. And then overall, there were a couple of concerns around privacy, but I, I think they were a little mistaken in thinking that we are going to be talking or not be, I just say we, the task force. We're going to be talking about individuals and I don't think that is the intent based on our mission statement for this task force. It's not going to be talking about individuals, but services and stuff that are available. And they wanted to know whether or not the task force was going to be public or televised, or if it was going to just be like, kind of more like a project task force meeting. And they, there were a couple of questions about rather having it be rather staff than elected officials. And I did express that the intent behind this task force was that it was made up of the people of town and not the staff and that having had talked to Mike, you and Bev and the staff and such that that was relayed and understood and everybody was good with it. So I think they're going to get it on their next agenda to kind of bring together what they had for questions, but that was the crux of them. So when we talk about that later on, we can maybe vet out a couple of those there. And then I had my very first meeting with the Commission on People with Disabilities. It was a good meeting. They talked, they talked about the green and the sidewalks and the possibility of using the connectivity grant to kind of handle that. They also talked about setting up an assessment or a survey of some sort for stakeholder groups in town. People to express what they would like to see or what they feel we need or that we don't have. They identified stakeholder groups from who information would be coming from, be it Human Services, Senior Center, Recreation Library, the School District. And they understood, they talked a lot about their dual mandate, which was also to educate the town and to advocate for people with disabilities. So the survey that they're going to start working on will be going out to individuals who live in town with disabilities. And then, Mike, I don't know how, where we we went with it, but we talked about them possibly having their own Facebook group that they can put information out on. And they're going to talk a lot more about the upcoming grant opportunities and stuff. So that was it for that. Those are the only two meetings that I had this week or this last two weeks anyway. That now gets us to eight, which is new business, eight dash one, appointment and vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions.
Hey, good evening. Mike Rosen, Town Manager. In tonight's packet, we do have two resignation letters. One was addressed at our last meeting from Rick Field, who was stepping down from Board of Assessment Appeals and Veterans Recognition Commission, and also resignation letter from Larry Grambling, who's stepping down from Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. But the position that Rick held on the Board of Assessment Appeals, we also received a letter of interest from from Madhu Randu Chintala, who would, he is currently an alternate on the Board of Assessment Appeals and would like to be appointed for the full role that Rick vacated. So that would be a term expiring November 3rd, 2021. So that is before you tonight to consider appointing Madhu to the full role.
Okay, and that's the Assessment Board of Appeals, correct?
Yes, Board of Assessment Appeals. Yep.
Too many words in there. Board Assessment, Assessment Board, either way. Yeah, okay.
B A A, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, that wasn't in our packet though, was it? It was just the resignations in the packet?
Correct. And then that had happened Thursday afternoon. So we did receive the letter from him that he would like to go from the alternate role to the full role.
Okay. So we can vote on that even though it's not in the packet, correct?
Yeah, it's covered under vacancies. We never have to be specific in the agenda for that.
All right.
All right. Chairman Nutri, if it's sorry to move forward, I'd entertain a motion to appoint Madhu Randu Chintala to the full position, the full member position for the Board of Assessment and Appeals.
This is Brenda Felucy. I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
I.
Cassandra?
I.
Steve?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Lou?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I was, there was an issue that I wanted to discuss regarding
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand.
I was, yeah, I was trying to do it and it's, the computer is having technical difficulties. So I apologize. I, I have no issue. The only concern that I have is right now that Madhu, while he's on the, as an alternate at this point, that that would mean that I believe, and Mr. Jones could correct this because I know that we did get an email on it, that he would be at this point, this would have been his fourth, fourth position or third position filled as far as on various commissions.
I think he's only on two right now, Lou.
Two at this point? Okay, then I'm sorry, maybe it was those other letters of interest that he had. Then, then I'm sorry, I, no objection.
Okay, and because he's, one of them is alternate, it would become this, right? So it would still only be two.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So are you in favor?
Yes, I.
Okay, that's okay. Kurt?
I.
I'm an I, so that passes unanimously.
Great. That was for a term expiring November 3rd, 2021.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Okay. All right, that gets us to old business. Nine, one, discussion of creation of the Mental Health and Substance Use Advisory Task Force.
Okay, so yeah, this is Mike Rosen, Town Manager, speaking. Also want to recognize Nancy Dunn, our Assistant Director of Human, you know, Services is in the audience as well. So, yep, hi Nancy. Thank you for joining us. So we are bringing back tonight again, the no changes to the previous draft that was on our agenda July 29th. That was the draft that had been submitted to the Board of Education for their input. As referenced earlier, there was discussion on it. So perhaps if council wants to make any edits to this at this point, or it's really, it's up for discussion.
So I don't personally, I don't think we should make any edits to this, at this point. But I do, I would like to kind of talk about a couple of the things that the couple of members brought up on the Board of Ed. And then I think if we wait for them to discuss it and if they have anything they want us to address when it comes back to us, we can put it back on the the calendar. So enter as a review. Would this task force, is this, this is a, is this handled like a regular committee from the perspective of minutes and being televised?
So right now, it's, it is a public body. Any subcommittee of an existing body, whether, you know, this would be a standalone task force, but there are going to be members on it that are representing elected officials and other members electors of the town. So it's going to be a standalone public body. So it will have minutes and agendas be required. Right now, under this Executive Order seven B, that does require that meetings are recorded, at least audio and provided on the website. So yes, for as long as we're under this Zoom business, it will be recorded, yes. But should we return to having in-person meetings in the future, it would not necessarily have to be recorded. Just open to the public and any subcommittees of the body would also have to be posted agendas and open to the public.
So afterwards, it doesn't have to be recorded?
Well, under FOIA, it does FOIA when we're
It has to be recorded in minutes.
Minutes, yes.
Yes.
Posted 24 hours ahead of time for agendas and, you know, that's under the old way of doing things. Now we have seven B's. So you know, it's a little different.
Okay. So as far as the privacy concerns, I don't know how, like, I don't, again, I don't think that's going to be an issue because I don't imagine that this task force is going to sit down and talk about John who did this or did that and what services they had. That's not the intent of the mission statement that we've already developed. So I don't necessarily think that comes into play. I don't think we need to do anything with that. I'm open if anybody else wants to discuss and just be sure of that, but that's kind of my reading of the mission statement and such that it's, it's not going to be sitting down talking about individuals. But Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that's something that can be addressed where you'll have, you may have a situation where somebody may come in from the public and wish to offer either testimony or statement or their their input regarding it. And if it's something that they, that they could be directed to just keep it in general terms, not mention any names specifically, just simply addressing it by saying that there is an issue that is is present. And if it is something that they need to address specifically by by name or by specific designation, then they could go into executive session at that point to discuss it and and just recap because I believe that that is something that that would be, although there is FOIA issues, that there's also other other HIPAA issues and other other protections that would allow them to go into it and they just simply say that an issue was addressed regarding this without going into a specific name or person. But I think that again, that as the, as presented, the the task force basically charter, what I think would cover sufficiently, that it's to be in general terms and only addressing general issues without any specific issues or specific people. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And I would assume if somebody was talking about themselves, then that would be there, within their, their right, but wouldn't have to necessarily, it's not a breach of privacy if they're speaking about themselves. But Brenda?
Yes, thank you. Brenda Felucy. First of all, executive session has some very specific rules. And unfortunately, HIPAA is not one of them that I'm aware of. Maybe Mike can go ahead and address that, but it's for things like personnel matters and contracts. So this kind of information would not, from my understanding, be covered under executive section, session. Secondly, there are, in a smaller town such as us, when we are discussing things like demographics and impacts to different demographics, some of these populations may be so small that would be easy to identify the people, family or individual that is being discussed, highlighted, or when we're trying to do some understanding of what's going on. So even though we might not be bringing in specifics like an address or a name, unfortunately, it could still be something that can be identified through a process of elimination for some of these demographics. So I would respectfully disagree about the privacy information that can come up in this type of open forum. I think that collecting some of this information can be done by our department heads without the public's need to get involved. And it could be done so that they don't have to, you know, take another evening out of their very busy schedules, especially during a pandemic and provide that information through the town manager and scrub it in such a way that it wouldn't have identifying information. It would also save us some time collecting some of that information, like in numbers one and two. And it, because looking at three and four, or I'm sorry, three, some of those things might be kind of hard to do in our COVID society right now. Like having a charrette might be difficult to do. So my recommendation is taking a look at this at piecemeal. And maybe we can get all of this information that we need in a much timelier fashion, much in a way that protects people's privacy, but still gets everything we need done with respect to time. So those are my inputs.
Thank you. John?
Okay, thank you. With respect to privacy, my idea or my vision for this committee isn't to provide services to members of the community who are struggling with a substance use disorder or a mental health issue. It's, to me, it's to evaluate the services we currently have and then make recommendations to the town council that either say what we're doing is great, or we may need help here, or we may need help there. It's not to provide services to people. So to me, privacy shouldn't be an issue at all because people from the community would not come to this committee saying they have an issue, they have a problem and they're looking for help. It's just to evaluate the services we currently have. So I think we may be getting ahead of ourselves a little bit, but I don't think privacy is really going to be an issue as far as the way I see this committee being formed and the way I see this committee being utilized.
Thank you, John. Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would echo the sentiments of Ms. Reagan exactly. And as far as to address some of the prior comments that I, that I was just addressing it as far as if somebody came forward to present testimony, that was a, that where they wanted to present an issue to to the task force addressing somebody else, then that's where you could have the privacy concerns come in. But I agree with with what Ms. Reagan's saying as far as this should be focusing on providing, examining the services, not necessarily providing the services, but examining what what we have out there and then and then addressing it and making recommendations. And I think that if there's any other further concerns that people may have, then maybe something that we would have to refer to for our town attorney for a, for an assessment regarding anything regarding confidentiality, HIPAA restrictions, things like that. We are dealing with with some of these sensitive issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Yeah, Steve Jones. I was wondering, Chairman Nutri, I don't know if it was laid out or if there is any specifics behind it. Is there a timeline for the existence of the task force? Just reading, I think, the second to the last Just reading, I think, the second to the last paragraph, it says after final recommendations have been made to the town council, the task force will dissolve. I was curious if we were planning on putting a hard deadline, or if this would be kind of open-ended until the task force kind of felt itself they had reached their goals and submitted that recommendation?
I'll be honest with you, when we first started talking about this, I was really hoping we would have it, you know, with like a six-month thing and have it wrapped up by the beginning of the year, so we could kind of have something if we needed resources to be put, to be reviewed and put into the budget, but I don't see that happening now with the delay that we had, waiting for the Board of Ed to weigh in and kind of finalizing all of it. So, I'm not 100% sure how long it will take, but I do think it's going to be until the task force comes up with their recommendations. At least that's kind of how I would see it happening. Mike, you were kind of...
Yeah, I just, I wanted to maybe offer an answer and also perhaps a deferral if Nancy's okay with it. So, the answer about FOIA is, as Brenda had mentioned, there's only five real reasons you can go into executive session, which is personnel matters, strategies and negotiations about claims or pending litigation, security matters, real estate transactions, or any matter that would result in disclosing a public record that is exempt from disclosure. So HIPAA is not on that list of five things. That's just, that's just the shortened version. I'm sure there's a lot of legalese to it, but, so, we would not be able to, this task force would not be able to go into executive session to discuss something that is of a sensitive nature. However, this is where I'd like to maybe ask Nancy for her advice on her time on the local prevention council. I'm sure there must have been situations where sensitive things have come up, or perhaps confidential information. How did the LPC handle it? Because those two are public boards, open to the public, so maybe she can take that one.
They are. Thank you, Nancy. You're on mute.
Okay, basically, we don't discuss things of that nature. I think if something came up like that, the task force is not a place where that type of thing should be coming up. That's not where people should be coming to complain about, you know, the, you know, the mental health of a neighbor, or the drug issues at the local playground, or whatever. If there are issues that come up like that, then they need to be referred to the appropriate department. You know, if it's a mental health issue, or if it's a, if it's a, somebody seeking assistance with treatment, or whatever, then they need to come to us. And we do have, we do abide by HIPAA, so it's not going to get out there. So, I think that's really, that's not at all, I agree with John, that's not at all what I envisioned for this task force, is dealing with that kind of issue.
I agree. And do you have an opinion on the pushback that, you know, that the LPC or the staff can handle, or should be kind of giving direction and all of that? I know in the past, the conversation around the task force has been more around this is a community task force to evaluate what we currently have and that. And I keep trying to reiterate that, but people keep wanting to loop it back to, you know, you guys doing it and the LPC already doing it, and I don't really see these as the same thing, but I really like your opinion.
Don't send it back here. We already know what's out there. We have spent years working on that. I think at this point, at your level, and it can't be done at our level, I think at your level, between town council and those people who were on the task force from that group and Board of Education, you provide an overarching group that can look at it from a whole-town perspective that has some clout, and maybe working together, you'll be able to, you know, to direct either the school or the town or whatever into doing things that you think are going to meet the needs of the town. I think most of the people that are going to be on this task force do not have a lot of experience with it. John, probably you are an exception, but you don't. So, you're going, you're going to be using us, I hope, as a resource, and you're going to be reaching out to some of the places that we can say, you know, this is where we get some services, this is where we're having a little bit of trouble. But, but I agree, it's a community thing, it's not a town-run thing, even though we have, you know, people from the school and from the faith community on the LPC. I think that the Board of Education and Town Council provide a lot more clout for something like this.
Thank you, Nancy. I think that you just said exactly what I've been trying to say, and I wrote it down, so I can quote you. You said it better than I did. Okay, so, okay, I think that was the majority of the questions that came up, privacy, public and private, elected.
Just want to recognize, Council of Lubbock has their hand up, just in case he had a quick question there.
Okay, I'm just making sure I didn't miss anything in any of the questions that came up from that meeting there. Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To you, Madam Chair, I'd just like to ask Nancy if she feels that the task force of this would be of a true value to the community and would assist their overarching mission to implement needed programs or needed, identify needs within the community. Thank you.
Could you repeat that? I'm not sure I got the gist was.
Certainly. That, I'm just looking for your opinion, having been in, dealing with this, with this issue in the LPC, if you feel that this would be a value-added task force that would assist you in getting what needs to be done within the town.
Oh, absolutely. Whoops, okay, absolutely. I think that, I think that you will bring attention to the fact that we have a local prevention council. I have to say, when I came here 21 years ago, we had a local prevention council at that point in time, and I couldn't get anyone to come to it. Nobody was interested. It's still not easy, and with COVID, it's gone completely haywire. But, but I think you will bring some much-needed attention to the fact that this is an issue in talent, and we are no different than our surrounding towns. We have this issue, and how, how do we want to deal with it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy. I agree. Again, I think, I think this is kind of what we need to be able to evaluate, evaluate that and get people more involved, and truly find out what we need from the, for the community. So, again, I appreciate you coming and sharing this information. I feel, like I said, I feel like the questions that were asked, I'm comfortable going back and relaying those, the answers to that, and I'm still comfortable with the mission exactly as it is right now, and the makeup and all of that, but does anybody have anything that they want to look at with it, or anything that they think that we should change based on the feedback that we just got from Nancy, or from Mike? Steve?
Nothing to change. I was just going to comment that I felt the mission statement as laid out was pretty thoughtful, and I think we've taken a lot of time to word it and have them, or have the language laid out for the membership, and that layout is pretty good. I think just the only concern, and I think Nancy already kind of helped quell that concern, was over utilizing town staff. I know that there'll be, there'll be a resource and probably a connecting figure, but, you know, when we have a lot of vacancies on other boards and commissions and trying to fill those spots, just making sure that, that if it's a group of individuals making up this task force that are elected and not elected officials, that they're doing the majority of the heavy lift in terms of the regular, their day-to-day tasks and meeting, meeting processes. So, that was just my only comment.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, which is another reason why I'm finding comfort in talking to Nancy. I think this has to be our lift. We go to the staff to get the information that we need to make the evaluations of what's out there, but I don't think this should fall back on the staff, as Nancy has said, and as Bev had said in the past, this needs to be the heavy lift on the task force. And I've said that. I said that when I went to the Board of Ed. I anticipate this being a heavy lift. I anticipate people needing to really focus and be prepared to dig in and get working. So, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Steve.
And I think just one other thought, I don't know if it'll necessarily connect to the process of this task force, but the, I had a number three in terms of the open dialogue. It might be worthwhile once we get to a point where there's either recommendations or opportunities for grants or programs, maybe working with the library or other community groups to create, hopefully it'll be better and you can be in person, but even Zoom-based activities or forums or discussions that would kind of allow more community-based event engagement on the issue. Because I know that, you know, some meetings, you're lucky if you get three or four unique individuals besides those that are there to do the job, like even tonight's meeting. I think it's mostly elected officials from boards and commissions, some staff, and then maybe one or two members of the public, but, but certainly having the opportunity to try and shine a light on the issue and then create events that can help inform the public better about the issues that we actually face, as I think Nancy has said, that, you know, we're like any other town in the quiet corner, so to speak, that, you know, we have some struggles, and addressing them would be ideal.
We're like symbiotic tonight. I agree wholeheartedly. Brenda?
Yes, one question. I tend to remember us going back and forth a little bit on the phrase related behaviors. It says, you know, address the topics of mental health, substance abuse, and related behaviors. I wanted to ensure that those were the terms we wanted to use, that they were appropriate and inclusive of everything that we needed. And again, I kind of tended to remember that we had talked about related behaviors and were thinking of changing that somehow.
I think we were at issues, and then we went to, we took out issues, and then we put in the, Nancy, I believe you were part of the related behaviors conversation part, because we're saying it's mental health and substance abuse, and I think the related behavior suggestion came from you, I believe.
That's actually, that was, that was actually the name of the survey that went out to the schools, and, and they, it is the behaviors, because somebody can sit there and have a mental health issue, but if you're not helping them or addressing the behaviors that result from that condition, that's what society and that person is being impacted by, are those behaviors. So, I think that's an important piece.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to make sure, I remember us having a conversation about it, and I just want to make sure we had that wording right. Thank you very much.
Okay. If nobody has anything else, this is just a discussion point tonight, but I think maybe we could just say if we're still good with the draft mission statement as is right now. I don't even know if we really actually even have to do that, Mike, at this point.
Well, so administratively, what we still have to do is if we're comfortable moving forward, and I would not recommend trying to jam this tonight, but we still have to set a public hearing, because this would be to create a new ordinance in our town charter, or codes, I'm sorry, the codes. So, perhaps at the next meeting, we would set a public hearing for the two meetings out to have the discussion about this, establishing this task force.
I'm good with that. I'm good with that. I'll go back to the Board of Ed this week with the, with the feedback that we just got from Nancy and everybody else, and provide that to them, but I agree, I don't think there's anything for us to do tonight. I think we bring it back up on the next agenda, and at that point, if we're good, we set a public hearing to create the code. And then at that point, I see Bev's not on, but Nancy, maybe you would know, I'm thinking this is going to be similar to the Commission on People with Disabilities, and that we're going to have to advertise, set a timeline, get the applications in and do all that. That's going to take at least a month after we establish to be able to really populate this task force. Would you agree it's about a month?
I would say probably.
Yeah, I think that's probably a safe assumption, Mike. What do you, what'd you think?
I would agree, a month, yep.
So, we're looking at, if we can, we'll set the public meeting, the next meeting, have the public meeting, the second meeting in October, advertise if it's set in November, and then maybe we could get it started around the December timeframe.
I think that would work out timing-wise, but it probably, I don't know, in terms of our budget process, if it would make it, the results of the task force won't make it for our budget process, I don't believe.
No, I don't think they will, because you're just going to be dipping your toe in at that point, so we're going to have to do the full review and that, and then look at it for any resources or anything. If we give it its time, and we say even that, at six months minimum, you know, it's going to get us to the end of the fiscal year, and then to make recommendations, it'll go into the next budget, if there are any, like, changes, any ads, or anything like that, any program or staff-related stuff that we would want to include in a budget.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Lou? Nope. Hand up, hand down, okay. All right, so I think at this point, there's nothing, unless anybody else has anything, I don't think there's anything else for us to discuss tonight with this one.
Tammy?
Yes.
You did say that the Board of Ed wanted to understand how we got the LPC and where it is now. I can, I can send an email to Mike and outline when it started, and, you know, how it started, where the funding comes from, whatever, so that they have that, so that you have that information to discuss with them, if you'd like me to.
I would love that. Thank you very much.
I can share that with Walt, Nancy.
Okay, great.
Perfect. Thank you. I appreciate that very much, Nancy. All right, I think we're going to, thank you very much, Nancy. We're going to move on to 9-2 now, consideration of a resolution to amend the resolution adopted on July 9, 2019, for the financing of a fire rescue truck and the setting of a public hearing thereon for October 13, 2020.
Great. Good evening, Mike Rosen, Town Manager. Also want to recognize Lisa Hancock, our Finance Director, as well as in the audience. This is after our last meeting, remember, we had a nice, healthy discussion about what our five-year outlook would look like with the fire truck being paid for in cash, and at the end of that meeting, we decided not to rescind the bond authorization, but to go back to the drawing board and to draw up what it would look like to do it with $400,000 instead of $750,000 from bonding, and up to $350,000, I'm sorry, $400,000 in cash, and up to $350,000 in debt for the fire rescue truck. So, this new, as laid out in your packet, the new model is 400 in cash, 350, up to 350 in debt. And again, tonight's action would be to set the public hearing for the next council meeting on October 13.
Okay, so at this point, we're just set in the public hearing. So, Lisa, thank you very much for taking your time, the time that you needed to really get this resolution correct, and working with the bonds areas and everything else to make sure we have it all documented correctly. Does anybody have any questions regarding setting the public hearing with the new language that it starts on page nine of the agenda? Brenda?
Hi, Brenda Felusi. I just had a question. Next month, we're going to be going over our capital plan, correct? Our five-year capital plan?
I don't have the, actually, give me a second, I'll get this.
That's November, I think. I think they're following it together right now, but they don't have to give it to us until...
Because personally, I prefer to see this put off until we take a look at the five-year capital plan, and if we could take a look at it with the fire truck, without the fire truck sort of thing, and how that impacts it. I mean, that's a great piece of information to have at our fingertips, but I just want to ensure that if we do put it off until that date, that we can still, if a purchase order shows up for the fire truck, we can still move forward with it.
So, at this time, so by the way, December 7, that's when I will be submitting the capital plan to council. Generally, the public hearing on that's not until February, but I submit the outlook to council. As we talked about at the last meeting too, that the chief at this point still is going through his process, he's not being held up in any way, so he's already doing what he needs to be done, but, you know, he's cautious, though, he wants to make sure there's, this is going to happen, so it's up to you all how you want to do this, but, but right now... But um, but right now, uh, you know, we we think, let's let's Lisa say anything otherwise to say about it. You know, we felt comfortable about the way it was handled last week uh from the staff side.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions about uh or any issues with the resolution as written? Um, if not, then uh Steve?
Let me sorry, let me just pull that up.
Page nine.
Alright, so I entertain a motion that we would consider resolution to amend the resolution adopted on July ninth for refinancing of the fire truck and the setting of a public hearing thereon on October thirteenth, twenty twenty.
Boo Boo Ball sucking it.
Any discussion?
Uh, just one quick comment, I I'm still unsure, I definitely am gonna vote in favor of this going to the public hearing. I'm still unsure about the split, whether or not that's a good idea. I mean, I definitely, we'll get more information and I'll probably ask a few questions at the public hearing of Lisa and Mike, but but at this point, I'm in favor of it going to the public hearing and just getting that information.
Thank you, Steve. If you want anything specific, if you just wanna send them an email to tell them, so they're prepared for the meeting um for the public hearing piece of it?
Yeah, definitely, just to so they aren't have to be on the spot at the public hearing itself.
Yeah, exactly. Um, okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? Uh Brenda?
Hi.
Cassandra?
Hi.
Steve?
Hi.
Dawn?
Hi.
Lou?
Hi.
Kurt?
Hi.
I'm an I, so it's unanimous. We'll set the public hearing, Mike, for October thirteenth. Okay, that gets us back to nine dot three, discussion and review of statute A one seventy-six dash six of the town cold code, code, not cold, code. Um, policy regarding use of the town green by groups and organizations.
Okay, um, Mike Rosen, Town Manager, uh, for this item, uh, the last time this was on a council agenda was July twenty-eighth. Um, as I commented earlier today to one of our counselors, it feels like a lot longer than July twenty-eighth, but that was the last time we had this on an agenda. Uh, so at the time of our last meeting where we discussed this, um, council had the current copy of the of the cha- the town codes one seventy-six six that was adopted back in nineteen eighty-four and uh we looked back in our records and there was no uh update to that since nineteen eighty-four pertaining to this code. Um, also, we referenced, but it wasn't in your packet, but it's in tonight's packets, we have the permit procedure for the use of the Talon Green, which is a four-page document that we distribute to anybody who requests usage of the green. And it includes a a map of the four locations that you could reserve, you know, A, B, C, and D. Uh, it has some language in there about telling us what the event's about and some other things, so that's all in your packet tonight. Um, and then also, uh, Mike Wilkinson, our Director of Administrative Services, who's also on the line tonight, put together a nice summary in your packet of the over, of what happened at the last meeting. Um, and what we had kinda left off was, there was a lot of ideas that were being kicked around. Uh, we did not do any straw polls and we did not do any formal amendments to the the current uh code. So we had said back in July that we would bring it back to a future meeting uh and start to reflect on what was discussed at the last meeting to see if we can start putting together sort of a working draft of amendments based on what the council is interested in doing to revise the actual uh code, uh, one seventy-six dash six. So really, this is more of a discussion. Uh, if there's any specific questions for Mike or I, we can try to take a crack at it. And uh otherwise, I imagine this will come back to, again, a future meeting where we'll have something more redlined for you, but at the moment, we do not have that because we need to hash out where you want us to redline things. That's all I have, thanks.
Thank you. Um, so at this point, I am going to open this up for us to have discussion on the policy, the chapter policy as written, um, and then the 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 permit that's attached, and I'm hoping at this time, we'll be able to come up with some suggested changes for Mike um to kinda work on from a redline perspective. Uh, Steve?
Not so much a question, just a housekeeping kind of comment. Or I guess technically the question, would the map of the Talon Green area need to be revised? As it looks like it's on page sixteen of the packet, um, it looks like it still has the old layout of the green. So I don't know if we would need to re-section having A, B, and A, B, C, and D in terms of part of the green itself, since it's kind of shifted in its um size and scope. And I guess the follow-up question would be, who did we, did we contract anybody or was this mostly designed in-house by our planning department?
If you, so that's, I I don't know the answer to that. I'm not sure where this uh map originated from. Uh, it doesn't quite look like it's GIS, although I'll ask around tomorrow from our planning department if they recognize this. But just as a point of information, we do, we we did receive uh requests to use the green recently, so we are still distributing this map as is. People seem to know the, whether or not it's not, you know, visually perfect, but they understand the four different spaces. But if we're updating, we might as well do it right.
Correct. Okay, um, anything else, Steve?
Um, I guess actually I'll I'll jump to the other question, I think from the summary that Mike Wilkinson provided. I think it's the the second to the last paragraph on page twenty was if there were any other town green policies that had been recently updated in our general area that we could use as um a guideline. I tried looking a little bit and didn't immediately find any that were comparable, but.
Um, Mike, I don't know if you, did you look at other communities? I don't, I'm not sure if we did that. I'm not sure.
No, um, it's Mike Wilkinson. Um, uh, ta- towns do it all differently. So you, you know, you could find seven different towns and they'd have seven different programs, so um we can certainly give samples if you want, um, but um maybe if we narrow the focus of what you're looking for, maybe we could try to find ones that are similar to that, but you know, in in talking, I did talk to our insurance provider and also our insurance advisor, and that's kind of one of the things we discussed, but there's no real blueprint that, you know, this is how you do a town green policy. So it's really up to you on what you wanna kind of uh develop and then we can shape it from there, I guess.
No, that's fine. Thank you, Mike. I I know it's, I think it's commonly said that there's a hundred and sixty-nine ways of doing things in Connecticut, so it's definitely, you know, on the plus side, that means we're kinda putting our own spin and our own local expertise on the greens, so. But yeah, if if there are any that you think would be worthwhile for us to use as a comparison, otherwise I'll I'll keep looking around myself and see if there's something worth noting from another town's policy.
Thank you. Uh, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, in, you know, in reviewing this, uh, there was, uh, I sort of did the legal lease review of uh of the statute and to sort of put it into the same framework of uh what we did with just the uh the most recent town green sign policy. Uh, is like breaking it down where to keep it sort of the same type of format, having the first thing be like uh subsection A, the policy purpose, where you could break it down to the policy purpose. Uh, sort of reflecting almost what we did for the uh town sign, town green signs, where it's a uh, you know, a place for uh for civic gatherings for the town, uh, town of Talon, uh, that the, that's purpose number one. Purpose number two is to protect public safety by ensuring that events and gatherings are appropriately monitored. And then third one would be to protect the integrity of the town green and the surrounding neighborhoods. And again, this is, I I I just sort of drafted a document quickly. I didn't send it to anyone yet. Uh, I can send it to everyone through Mr. Rose and I'll send it to him uh for uh distribution. Just sort of set a uh sort of a general framework uh for uh for how it could be structured so that it complies with or is in similar to what we have for the uh town green sign policy. Um, I think that the main thing is keeping the language the same, where if the town green should be uh, uh, should be limited to civic, uh, relig- religious, nonprofit, not-for-profit groups located in the town of Talon, agency for the town of, uh, for the town of Talon government, and that any other groups or organizations approve, uh, specifically approved by action to town council. That means that if anybody outside that wants to to come in and use the green, that like either an outside group or there'll be like some other type of gathering that wouldn't fall into one of those, they could come and make the request uh through the town council to, so there would be action taken by the town council to approve it. Um, I think that um in accordance with the discussions that we had uh pri- previously on this is reducing the timeframe from forty, I mean, from three eight, uh, three weeks, to I believe we discussed forty-eight hours. Um, and by following it either online or through an email to Mr. Rosen. Um, for me, the uh, the biggest issue is the issue of liability. And as I said in the last uh, the uh, the last time we discussed this, that this is, this is a hard issue for me because it's something that I think that um, that we should require, if it's got something, if you're making a request for a permit, that you either have the uh, have the insurance policy as currently required or that you uh, that you sign a waiver saying, we're not getting the insurance policy, but the organizer of the event should be responsible for for any, for any liability then. I think that's, that is a common sense thing. Of course, anything regarding gross neglig- negligence on the part of the town, that would fall outside that scope and that's just general case law as it stands. Uh, but I think that's something that's uh reasonable. And if uh, that if people don't, or if say if a group decides not to go forward with a uh, with a permit, not requesting a permit and just sort of shows up on the town green, that, you know, I'm not saying that we, that we should prevent them from doing that, but that includes specifically inside there as a uh, as a, one of the su- uh subsections for that is saying if you, if uh, if at any point you do not comply with any of the permit requests or like permit requirements, then you're basically accepting liability and holding the town harmless for anything that goes on. Um, again, that's something that we could work on the language on, but I think that's something that can be added under uh that subsection F. Um, you know, the different things of either have an insurance policy, the event organizer signs a waiver for the insurance policy, but also a hold harmless agreement. And then, or alternatively, have it as a subsection or a separate section uh under uh would be, I guess, section G, that uh, that if there is a failure to comply with anything, then you're waiving uh, you you're assuming the liability and waiving any uh responsibility to the town for uh, for damages or injuries. And then, of course, the last one would be is adding in a subsection, saying that um two subsections, one saying that if there's an event that's occurring on the town green, that if if it's determination by public safety personnel that are on the scene there, that they create a uh, a public safety hazard or some issue, that they could terminate the event. Um, as well as uh that if uh, the last one being the saving provision, saying that if at any point in time, the town council decides that they're for a specific event, they wanna waive any of those requirements, that they can do it, but it's gotta be a specific issue for a specific event uh before the town council. Those are just my thoughts. I mean, taking a look at all the different uh issues, taking a look at some of the other uh towns in in the surrounding area. Uh, as uh, as Mr. Wilkinson said, there's, you know, there's no, there's no set way I'm doing it. There's no real one singular way that towns do it, but taking a look at some of the towns that I'm familiar with, that they all have similar provisions uh within them that I think that that we can incorporate. That's my input. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Lou. Uh, Brenda?
Hi, Brenda Felusi. Um, through you, um, Mike Wilkinson, it said in our notes that you were gonna take a look at uh insurance and liability and see what we're already covered for um, if there ends up being an event on the green. Um, so I wanted an update on that. I have a couple other questions, but we'll go for that one first.
Sure, so just like any facility in town um land, I mean, we have insurance on property. We have liability insurance, so if there's a third-party claim, um, you know, obviously, that would go through our insurance carrier and they would defend it. Um, in the fifteen years I've worked in Talon, I only remember one claim that was associated with the green. Uh, I remember uh, there was a claim, uh, someone fell, not in the main green, but down uh toward Old Stafford, where we actually owned some land in front of the homes. I think there was a tag sale and someone fell and someone uh tried to claim it was the town's fault and Kerma defended it and and it eventually was resolved. So um, just like any facility in town, we have insurance. That's why we pay for it, to defend it. Um, if something comes up, that's a third-party claim. Um, obviously, as Lou kind of uh alluded to, any kind of other issues. Um, the reason why you have a ask for insurance, for example, uh, like Lou mentioned is, it shit, you know, it kind of shifts the liability. If if an organization, I'm just taking an example, if the farmers uh um, had uh something on the green like they used to, um, and they had a table out and someone hit the table and broke their knee and they have insurance, then, you know, that's the insurance that would deal with that problem, not the town. So um, uh, so that's why we often ask for insurance when there's organized events, so um. But, you know, just like any other facility, we have insurance, we have good insurance and any claims that are filed against the town with, are defended by our insurance.
At cost of the town. Sorry, sorry.
They, thank you for that. Um, one housekeeping note, obviously, we're gonna change Board of Selectmen to Town Council. That was on one of the sheets.
Yeah, that's how, that's how long it's been since it's been updated.
Exactly. Um, Steve already took care of the map. Um, I, I have three things um about the use of the town green. Today, when we did our, when we did our walk, um, there was a number of kids that were getting together on bikes and they were using um, a app on their phone, probably, I don't wanna go naming names, but it's one of those things where you check in at different landmarks and you get points and you can do battles and things like that. Um, kids on bikes are gonna be using the green and they're going to be gathering, hopefully, when this is all over, um, in groups spontaneously. Um, we also are gonna have spontaneous vigils um and remembrances that happen on the green and we might have, you know, kids getting together for um or families getting together on the green at at future events, again, spontaneously going for walks, um, shooting, uh, playing hacky sack, um, doing a frisbee. It's a little scary on the green, but for those individual uses, um, for things that are, that you can't schedule like a vigil, um, I don't think we should try to regulate against those. I also don't think we should try to regulate, regulate against um gatherings on the green because that is what the green is for. Um, that historically, that's what the green has been around for, for our town to come together um, for a number of of uses and varieties. Um, so I I'm getting concerns that we're trying to pigeonhole people, um, telling them how they're supposed to use the green. I, and I get events, we we definitely want to be able to schedule them so that larger events don't interfere with each other, so that everybody has the opportunity to um use the green. But when we start creating four-page documents, um, requiring insurance, um, and asking for three weeks of um notice, um, we're, it's giving a a non-community feeling to the green use. It's, it's making it seem that people are unwelcome, that we want a pristine lawn instead of we want the community to come out and interact and celebrate um together or observe together. Um, so I, that's where my concern lies with this, is um, again, somebody has decided that they want to use the green for something and then the town council gets together and decides we wanna regulate how they get to use it. Um, I think that's inappropriate um in many respects when it comes to freedom of speech and gathering in an open space. Thank you.
Well, I think this policy, though, is already there. We're not creating it. It's, we're actually looking to change it, so it's already there. Um, which is why Kurt brought it up, I think, so um. Uh, Kurt, you're next on the list.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so I get, kinda circling back to why I brought this whole uh thing up. Um, my, my main rub against this original policy was um the fact that it had to go through a non-elected or rather bureaucratic process of the town of, town manager's office and everything like that. Um, I really, I I enjoyed Mr. what Mr. Luba presented. Uh, I I like the idea of that. Um, that I had a problem with, um, the town manager being able to grant
Well, there.
Um, I'm sorry, uh, town manager being able to grant waivers for um insurance, just on, based on really no, nothing, uh, there's no requirement, so it's just based on whether he wanted to grant it or not. So I I I like. So I I like Mr. Luba's proposal that insurance or liability would be either waived. Or not not waived, but signed over to the person who is organizing an event or is assumed if you go around the process. So I I think we should, if you can, Mr. Luba could send out his proposal to everybody. And I think that's something I'd really like to see going forward, a good place to start for Mike and Mike, as a red line or current policy.
Thank you, Lou.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I think Mr. Jones was before me, so I'll I'll let him speak first.
No, you were first.
You were first, but that's okay. It comes up in order of hand raising.
All right, perfect, um, thank you, Madam Chair. I think that the main thing here is that, but with that, especially with that last, that last paragraph that I was, or the last provision I was talking about. We're not looking to bar people from 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 using the green. This isn't a matter of keeping the green pristine, the green should be used by people for gatherings. The main issue, though, is that there's a permit process for large gatherings to ensure that people are, you know, that the town is appropriately covered. And that the organizers take the appropriate steps to to ensure that there's protections for the town. That I think that if it's something that people want to get together for a gathering, people want to get together for a vigil or something else, that's fine. That's why you have that last provision saying that if they, you know, if they don't go for a permit, if a person did not go for a permit. Then that's fine, but anything that may happen in relation to that, you know, that spontaneous gathering. If there's some, an issue that occurs, then they are the ones that are going to be bearing the first liability, short of gross negligence on part of the town. Gross, if the town is grossly negligent, like there's a hole that somebody falls into, or there's something else that occurs. Then, of course, the town will have to bear responsibility, case law is clear on that, the law is clear on that. But it's when somebody gathers there and then something that, you know, that the town cannot prevent from happening occurs. That the town shouldn't be responsible if the people did not go through the normal process of of going for a permit. Getting the appropriate public safety personnel there for monitoring, things like that. So I think that we have built in, in the in the language that I'm proposing, the ability and the and the opportunity for people to gather there as they so choose. It's just that they do so at their own peril if if anything else happens, if the large gathering. That that where something occurs, and that's what I think that, you know, that many other towns have. And that I think is sound legally and is also something that it gives people the ability to use the green as they want. But also appropriately protects the town. And I think that's consistent with what Mr. Shainer originally wanted to see, is to make the ground, make the green more accessible. To groups that want to have these spontaneous events, but also understanding that there's that if they do organize that. That they then also bear the responsibility for anything that may occur. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Lou. Steve?
Yeah, Steve Jones, this is probably more some some fact-finding, these don't need to be answered tonight, form of questions. Just looking at the document itself for the permit, I believe it's page fifteen and sixteen of the of the document. In terms of the use of electrical outlets, I was sort of curious from a historical perspective how the tree lighting is done. And if if there is any past history of use of electrical or need for electrical use. For events on the green outside of the tree lighting ceremony. The second question was going to be, in terms of damage assessments, how frequently or how how long does it take for a damage assessment to be completed? And I assume it's done by Public Works. And then the third question, which may be a little, a little bit getting into the into the mud, but with the new signage policy or with with the signage policy. It will be in place for the green. Do applicants on the green have the right to move signage? If they rent a certain section and there's, say, you know, a certain, the maximum number of signs, but they need the additional space, you know, how do we? Handle that particular issue of, you know, maybe they need additional space for a table, but there's a sign up that's announcing a sporting event or a sports recruitment. Drive sort of thing, so I guess those are the three notes I just wanted to put forward while we're reviewing the policy.
Steve, this is Mike, the only thing I can say on the last question you had or the last idea is that. I don't know if section A on the on page sixteen there, I think that's after the tree. So that where where the signs are, there's up to five signs on the on the green allowed, that's prior to that section A. So I don't, I don't think they're, they coincide with one another. And then, yes, it's Public Works that goes out to do the long, the the damage assessment, and I'm not sure how long it takes Scott to do it, but it's. Hopefully, it's relatively quick if there's no damage.
Okay, yeah, and I think the the concern, I think, when I raised the idea of the electrical outlet outlet usage, not saying the town should, but. If an event were to be held there where there was electric use needed and they brought in portable generators. Just making sure that that isn't a hindrance or a nuisance perhaps to. You know, residents on the green, you know. I I I like the idea, I think there was at one point a discussion of a food truck festival being a possible location on the green. But I then realized how many of those food trucks use portable gas generators to run their their businesses and I was. Potential noise pollution that could occur for residents on the green, but that's just more of a future thought. Point of note. And I think, other hand up, I don't.
I'm starting to have a couple, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, John.
All right, I'm I'm a little choppy here with my internet, but. I'm just looking through the the minutes from the last meeting in July, I, if I lived on the green, I might be a little concerned about what's being talked about right now. But one of the things that I brought up at that last meeting was the fact that if if there's a gathering. From an organization that wants to deliver a message to the community, then yes, I think that should be regulated, but. If somebody wants to use the green, let's say somebody's having a wedding and they want to use the green and get a bunch of people together for some pictures. I don't see that as being an issue, so I just think it's it's important to distinguish. An organization who who wants to deliver a message, use the green for that purpose, or a spontaneous gathering. And we talked about that at the last meeting, but I think it's important to reiterate that issue because if I lived on the green, I don't want to. I I don't want to be worried about getting a group of people spontaneously on the green for whatever purpose. And a good example is the is the senior prom, a lot of the high school kids, for most of the time that I've lived here, have gone down to the green and they've used it. They've taken pictures and those types of things, so I just want to make sure that we understand what we're talking about as far as an organization and a spontaneous gathering. Thank you.
Sorry, I was muted, so that actually leads into some of the questions that I wanted to kind of go over. Now that everybody's kind of talked about it, so when I was looking at this actual policy for A. Mike, from a notes perspective and everybody else, I think three weeks. Is two, I guess, what I need to try to wrap my head around is how we are defining an event. Because like what John just said, I totally agree, if this is an event like a farmer's market or, you know, the Lions Club. Beholding their pancake breakfast or somebody coming in to do like a big event kind of a thing. I can see, I see that differently than a gathering on the green. If if I want to go up and hang out with some friends or if I want to meet some people and. Do whatever, well, the senior, the prom pictures actually is filed as an event, I believe it's actually filed with the permit. But because that is large gathering and it's requires police and it requires safety, all kinds of other stuff. So I would like to kind of talk about how we define an event. Like, is, how would we define the event in contrast to a gathering? Is it a size thing, is it something that's advertised, like Lou, you said, is it is it an event that an organization is trying to? An organization is planning it and not like an an individual? So with that in mind too, I think for an event. It might seem reasonable to say we need more than a week, if it is just like a gathering and you want to. Put something on a calendar to say, I'm going to have fifteen people and we're going to go and have book club. Even that, like, I don't even think something like that would be regulated, in my opinion, that's more of a gathering and not an event. And then, and B, on B there, we talk about nonprofit organizations. And I'm wondering, maybe Lou, your language would address that, but. Does that have to be a certified nonprofit, like, are we said, this here is very limited to just nonprofit and government using the green. And I'd like to get away from that and go more toward like some kind of definition of an event or who throws an event. And then the difference between that and a gathering, obviously, gathering of people is a nonprofit. Obviously, change the Board of Selectmen. On C, here, the party is authorized to use the green under the policy, shall arrange for police service and control ta- traffic and pedestrian safety. Again, I think we need to tie that to a very firm definition of an event. Like, how many people do you expect to have at this event? At that point, you would need to ensure that we have police. And then in E, organizations authorized to use the green shall be responsible for moving all litter. I I had the question there where instead of organizations, should that be organizers or organizations? Like, again, getting back to if this is a certified event, who is, if you are going to have an event on the green. And then, as the organizer, you are responsible for that event, for cleaning up the litter, for making sure nothing happens, et cetera, et cetera. And F, again, with the liability, I had the same question on size limits. And then, when I was looking at the actual permit. In the second paragraph, I think we need to take out. The part where it says, which to date has included the addition of reproduction lampposts, grading, curving and reciting of the South Green. The replanting of the American elm trees and more work is planned for the green in years to come. I think that, from the permit perspective, it should just say the council also directs overseas the restoration of the green. And the council will need to manage the events in order to minimize impact to, I think we take out recently. Restored areas, but impact to the green while still providing opportunities for public use of this precious town property. Maybe we take out precious and just put town property. In the third paragraph, effective immediately. Here we get, this here contradicts the policy because it says a permit can be obtained in the town manager's office. The permit must be approved by the town manager or his delegate. In order to assure your event can be approved, please submit an application at least one week in advance of the event dates. When the actual policy says three weeks, so it kind of contradicts itself there.
It's more restrictive, so it's okay, the 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 permit, for us, it's good that, for the for the person taking out the permit, it's only a week and not three. And that's what we strive for, quicker service.
Right, so maybe that just becomes what we have up in the policy also is a week. How would we handle the damage? And and did you, I know, Mike, I think you addressed this, but you were going to, somebody was going to talk to the attorney on the liability. I think, Mike, you already kind of, Mike Wilkinson, I think you kind of already went over. We do have insurance for the town, but I think we need to recognize what Lou said here and. We shouldn't put that onus on the town if somebody organizes an event or something and somebody gets hurt. It's their responsibility as the organizer of that event to. Have that, again, after we define what the definition of an event is. But that liability should be on their event insurance and not have to fall back on the taxpayer. Those were, those were mine on that. So I think we can maybe have a conversation around event and gathering and nonprofits and such. But Lou, you have your hand up again?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and you brought up a very, a very good point that if some of the other town ordinances. Across the state do recognize it and they break it down as far as an event being either like a recreational event. As well as a organized event. There's not a lot of definitions that sort of meet, you know, that are really clear on it. And that a lot of the, generally, it's good to try and stay away from a set number. Unless it's like an occupancy issue like if you're renting out a a building or something like that. But for the green, the use of greens and other other ordinances that are similar to this, that they generally focus on what type of event it is. And how it's organized, where if it's a recreational event, like people coming out for a book reading. Or for a, or for pictures, or for to play football or soccer like Mr. Shainer brought up earlier. Or to take a look at some of the, some of the foliage on the green like Mr. Jones brought up previously. That's something that could fall under a term of a recreational usage. But I think that anything that that we could say, anything outside these parameters would then be required for like, be considered. As requiring a permit, so.
You're stuck.
Nobody really gave a solid definition, even the state statutes aren't even clear on on some of the things. As far as where they look at recreational versus non-recreational and they leave it at that, so it's really sort of a nebulous area. But I don't think that we want to go into setting a specific number because then you could have something like an impromptu football game. Flag football game on the green where it ends up having twenty people involved in it. Is that something that we would normally require permit for? No, we really shouldn't, but at the same time, if we set a number of twenty people, they would be fall, they would fall within that parameter of what our requirements are. I think the main thing is, rather than going focusing on the number or the type of event. Is, again, is focusing on that that last waiver, saying, anything that you do, so anybody can have access to the green. But if it's something that that falls outside of like normal gross negligence on behalf of the town. Then the organizers of that event accept the responsibility, I think that's really where the focus should be. Is that final, final provision, rather than trying to set parameters as far as, well, this is an event and this is an event. This is an organized event versus a non-organized event, I think that focusing. Then this is, then you do so at your own peril. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Lou. Steve?
Yeah, sorry, I lost my internet for a brief moment, so I missed some of the initial comments, Tereminuccio, but I think. As a potential friendly amendment for your concern with, I think it's section E and F in terms of the use of the words organizations. I wonder if section C, which states the party and then in brackets E's authorized to use the green would be. A reasonable replacement for organizations because then it would cover in the application. Both the applicant and the organization in question that is filing the permit.
That would work, take out organization, yeah.
And they just say, you know, the parties, party bracket E's authorized to use the green shall be responsible. And the party slash parties using the green shall file to the manager and so on and so forth.
That works, thank you for that wording. So I kind of feel like we still haven't given Mike what he's going to need to kind of come up with some kind of language on this. So, Mike, did you get my my input on the actual permit, the changes we're moving?
Yeah, and I know we should obviously open up any edits to the full council for straw polls or whatever, but. You know, I have, I have a pretty good understanding of where we're at, I think what we need to define, though, is the most recent. String of thought about recreation events versus, you know, organized events. So if if we can maybe put some definitions around those, I would be able to maybe start, you know, revising the policy accordingly.
Okay, so.
Exist in our town charter or somewhere?
I'm sorry, what?
Wouldn't somewhere else in our policies, we have definitions for. Organizations, organizations or. I tend to remember seeing something in our. You know, I don't want to be inconsistent with us in this one policy using terms for organizations, events, et cetera. And then having those words already either. Defined elsewhere in our policies or defined differently in different parts of our policies. Because if if the terms are defined for renting. Terms are defined for renting. Crandall Lodge. Are differently defined on for using the town green, we can cause some confusion for someone. Who might be trying to decide which area to use for their event. So maybe we need to take a look at wherever we are allowing. Use of town property and ensure that our language is consistent throughout.
Mike, are you good with that?
Yeah, I was actually going to see if our town clerk can join us for a moment on that, so just to answer that question. She was gonna be here anyway for town manager's report, so I might be able to get you an answer on that tonight, Brenda.
Okay. In the, in the meantime, do we want to kind of vet that out a little bit, Lou, your hand is up. And it is now down, so speak at will.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, I, I agree with Ms. Lucy on this issue, I think it's something that, that if we can, I mean, and I don't think that we need to flesh it out right now. Or, but I think it's something that if we can have Mr. Rosen and. And the town clerk and others take a look through the, to the charter or through the policies. To sort of make, see if there's any other definitions, I know when I was looking, when I was putting together that draft that I just sent out to Mr. Rosen. That I didn't see any, any specific definitions of events or anything else on there, but. But I, I mean, that was a quick review. And I think that that's something that we could probably have, have Mr. Rosen and his staff take a look at that. And then if there is anything, that include that as part of the definition, rather than belaboring the issue tonight and trying to figure it out tonight. Thank you.
Welcome Sheila.
Sheila, you there, sorry. So we were just, not to put you on the spot, I know I happened to text Sheila because she was coming on for the town manager's report anyway. But we had just a quick question that doesn't necessarily have to be answered the second. But is anywhere, I was looking in the town charter and codes on my, on my laptop. Is there anywhere that defines what an organization might be or perhaps what an event might be in town? With, you know, whether it's in some other part of our code or I'm trying to think, Brenda, you gave some good examples of where that, where that language may exist.
Yeah, for example, somebody who's trying to look to rent or reserve a park area, a facility or the town green. If any of those locations have already created a definition for events, organizations. What else, what other words we have here?
Organizer, like.
Organizer. So that we have consistent language, so we're not confusing someone who's trying to have a baby shower, let's just say. You know, so that they're not, they're, we're consistent across the board and it's easy for someone who's looking to rent or reserve. Easy for them to understand what we're talking about.
You're on mutual.
I'm not aware of Brenda, of any definition in the code, I would have to research it, off the top of my head, I don't know. It's, it's not ringing a bell that there is a definition of, I mean, are you looking for like what would be a nonprofit or? For to use the green, or I'm not sure what context you're.
Yeah, maybe, I, I'm just thinking, now I'm backing up and saying. You know, for consistency, we want me, we might want to make sure that our language is consistent for any public facility. That can be used.
For use of public facilities or town property, okay.
Yeah.
I will look into that.
Thank you, Sheila.
Sure.
I don't recall seeing it anywhere, but I could wholly be incorrect. I know pretty much from the perspective of the lodge, I believe anybody can rent it, there's no difference between a. A nonprofit or me saying I want to go and rent it, it's anybody. Can file and rent it, so. In that case. Do we want to talk about the difference between an event and a gathering of people, because like Brenda, you just said like a baby shower, I would think a baby shower is an event. That's not like a, you know, general gathering of people, that would be, you know, possibly a lot of people. But.
One of the things I'm concerned about is like those spontaneous events, like somebody finds out they're getting deployed. And we want to give them a send off, you don't have three weeks sometimes, depending on the nature of what's going on. Or how public you want this information to be, so it might be something that spur of the moment. A vigil is something that spur of the moment, depending on your religious practices, sometimes you have, you know, those are happening within twenty-four hours. That doesn't give us the opportunity to fill out one of these forms if we wanted to gather for candlelight vigil. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that comes up spontaneously. Or recognition, you know. You know, the untimely death of the youth in our community might end up leading to a vigil. You know, and those are things that. We do, you know, we don't want to interrupt someone's grieving process. Or, you know, their expression of how important these people were to them, so. I don't know, I'm just trying to think of everything without. That, that could possibly happen, that someone might decide they needed to gather in a location in town.
Mike, I feel like we're not really giving you what you need right now.
Well, so I mean, the only thing I was just, my thought on that last point was even if it's something that is happening within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Any notice is better than no notice, because even if it's spontaneous or not, if there's a lot of people attending, we still need to. Let public safety know, the troopers know, I mean, just for traffic or for, you know, speed or pedestrian safety. We just need to know about that kind of thing, so that's, you know, may, maybe the more, the more notice, the better, I think a week is, is good, as long as it, if it's something that's a planned event. But maybe somewhere we can write in that, you know, and any notice i- is, is required or something like, I. Just, just to let us know so that we can plan for it properly.
I agree, I don't think it's too much to say, you know, planned event, I'm good with a week for a planned event, but anything else. I, I know at one point we talked about having a calendar online for the green. I would think we would need to find a way to have a notification. An individual. Individual to individual use of the green. Is not an event to me. But if you're going to have some sort of gathering or anything like that, notice to the town isn't. I don't, I don't think that's, we can find a way to have that without it being onerous. Okay, so. What do you need right now, Mike, I feel like we're not giving you what you need. I feel like we're talking a lot, but we're not actually doing anything, and I hate that more than probably anything.
Well, I guess, I mean, what I have better tonight than I didn't have two months ago was when we. There's a little bit more. Streamlining of the voice tonight, that maybe I can put together some sort of a redline version of this for a next meeting. I know that Counselor Luba has also proposed something, I haven't looked at it because it didn't, it just came through a few minutes ago, but. Maybe we. Showcase that at a, at a future meeting as well, I, I, I'm not sure how to best proceed from here. I, I can, I think I have, based on our conversation tonight, the minutes will reflect. Enough information that I can put together a redline version, and maybe at the next meeting we can go through and. You know, just some straw polls or something.
I like that idea. Okay. Lou, your hands up?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, not, not to belabor an issue or anything like that, but I think, and hearing all the concerns. I think that maybe some additional language that we could provide, Mr. Rosen, is something along the lines of like one of the last provisions is that. Nothing in this policy precludes any individual or collective use of the green. But that failure to, failure to obtain a permit, again, will result in a waiver of town liability, something along those lines where. You know, that, I think that's the, the main issue of what we're all, we're all sort of looking at, we don't want to prevent people from using the green. That we're not saying that everybody needs to get a permit, but if you fail to get a permit then, and you know, you have a larger group that's there. And something happens, then the town won't be held responsible for, for, for basic, anything short of gross negligence. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I like that, thank you, Steve?
One other question, but it doesn't need to really be covered tonight. Does our applications at all cover the potential closure of the green? In terms of, I think, some of the prior comments and some prior discussion about hosting food truck festivals or having events on the green that maybe. For the purpose of public safety, it would, it would be incumbent upon the organization to close, say, a carriage road or the main green and create a, a detour. That goes around it, I don't know if that's something that can even be done, or if that's something that should be considered in this policy or not.
Steve, it's Mike, I think that would actually be part of the trooper's office and public safety department have a policy, have a permit. That if you, and it's a public safety form. And it's completed when you know there's a large thing, something like a food truck fest or. Even something else like, i- if in the harvest fest would have been a, a opportunity for us to give this a try, but. Type of event, expected attendance, and then, like you said, any sort of provisions where we'd have to close roads. You know, just to keep people safe with one ninety-five being so heavily trafficked, so I think that would go through their permit process, not so much ours.
Yeah, I was curious because, you know, the carriage road is probably a town road versus the town green road is technically a state, I think, a state road. That cuts through, so I figured that that was probably the, the process, but thanks for the clarification, Mike.
Sure.
In my head, when we talked about. When we, when I talked to planning, not planning, permanent celebration. Or Mike, when we had the conversation about a harvest, a harvest event, we were thinking the main road would stay open. But the, the carriage road and the part of Old Stafford, all of that would be closed. So you would still have the traffic on the main road, and then you would have the event be on the green all the way over through like carriage road. On both sides of the green, kind of a thing, so you would have to divert, so basically you'd close off where red and white is. And you'd close off like where the. Old Stafford and Dunhill, so traffic would have to go from Old Stafford down Dunn, down the main road, and if they wanted to get down. By the high school, they have to go down by the art center, like that would be kind of your detour. Keeping the main road open and closing off all of that part of the, the green, but I would assume that would all, like you said, Mike, that would all go through the permitting process, you'd have, we'd have to work with the police and. Make sure the roads get closed off and all of that stuff.
Absolutely, yeah, that's something that's above and beyond this simple permit that we're putting together for this, and that's something for a major event, we would consider doing that.
And that would be a town event, so it's not like somebody's coming in and doing that, that would be a town sponsored Harvest Fest event, kind of a thing.
Sure, unless, I mean, if there's any, I, we don't have any other examples of this, because I don't think we, we do this type of thing at the moment, so. But sure, I think it would be probably town events that would be. More in line with closing roads down, because it's a significant thing to do that, to disrupt traffic, you'd have to advertise and get, let people know, so it, it takes a lot to do that.
Yeah, that's a big one, next year, twenty twenty-one, year that's better than twenty twenty.
Actually, at the Black Lives Matter event that was on the town green. Public Safety had approached the organizers and did offer to shut the roads down in case they wanted to do a parade. So that was something that the organizer was not. Planning on doing and did not take advantage of, but the, just to let you know that they, they are prepared and they do know how to do it on a, on a moment's notice. So. You know, Public Safety and our resident state troopers are pretty awesome to be able to. Be, being able to respond to an event like that pretty quickly.
They are, I will give them that. So if there's no other conversation, Mike, I think you've got at least something to start redlining and if you can take Lou's. A proposal and forward that out to everybody on the town council, we can just, in the next, the next meeting. I think it would probably be safe that we could get this back on fairly quickly, so it's not a July to September thing again.
Sure, I know our October meetings are looking pretty hefty, but we can try to see if we can get this on the next one.
Okay, well, we can talk about that, see if there's anything that, what's on there and what we need to kind of figure out. All right. With. That gets us to ten, report of the town manager.
Okay, hi, Mike Rosen, town manager, I also had asked Sheila to be here tonight. To respond to some of the questions that came up at the last meeting, and I appreciate you being here, Sheila. Do you want to go first with your update, and then I'll go, I have some more updates afterwards.
Sure, as I'm sure all you know, residents began getting their state applications on Friday and over the weekend. I was able to obtain another lock, drop box, election drop box from another town who had more than they wanted to use. So we installed, Scott's crew installed another drop box, ballot drop box by in front of the library. A few feet up from where you would put your book drop off, off. And they did that, we got it on Thursday, they went to West Hartford and picked it up and installed it on Monday, so that was great, some really quick work there. I did send out an e-blast to the residents explaining that they would be receiving their applications and. We had about three hundred and eighty of people, residents, that applied on their own, they downloaded before the state's. Applications came, and so I also asked them to please not send me another one, but we are getting quite a few of them. And where the drop boxes are and that ballots are not going to be mailed until October second, so that hopefully to cut down on some of the phone calls asking where their ballot is. DPW, I kind of learned by the primary, DPW did a great job installing two sandwich boards. Right on, on near the sidewalk, indicating where the drop boxes are to make it a little easier for the residents. So that's great, and they stand out. Also, if it wasn't done today, I didn't have a chance to go out front and look. But they were also going to put on our town green on the signboard there, that we have two drop boxes, people, and say where they both are, so that we don't have too much of a. Traffic jam out in parking lot A. We also posted for two part-time employees that I know you know about to help with absentee balloting. And we got a good response from them, and we had hired two people who started on Monday. They're working approximately five hours a day each. So far, we have processed eleven hundred absentee ballot applications, so that means we don't have ballots yet, they were ordered, but we're waiting for the printer. So these are all set to go, we have three different ballots because of our three different districts. So once the ballots come, you know, we can stuff them and be ready for October second. Let me see, so that three hundred and eighty, we did, Kathy and I did before our help, but in the past two days, we're only on day two and we did seven hundred and twenty, so I'm, I'm pretty happy with that. I have to say, we have a really good group here at Town Hall, because Scott and his crew helped us set up two workstations in the vault. And our IT guy has been living in there, making sure that it's working with the state's absentee balloting program, he's really prioritized that. Our tax office has been helping us with all the prep work and just opening mail, we have about a hundred and fifty applications we've gotten so far that we. Haven't been able to even process at all, so we're, we're a little bit behind, but considering we came in on a three, you know, the Friday, Saturday, Sunday mail, we did pretty good catching up. And Mike and his staff and Lisa and her staff have also been helping us. I don't know if you have any other information you want.
So, so Sheila, you're saying there were, you've already processed eleven hundred applications?
Yes.
And you have about a hundred and fifty more that you haven't opened yet?
Correct, and they're coming in.
A day, you think?
Pardon?
How many do you think you're estimating a day?
Today, we received three hundred and fifty.
Wow. And those are not, or those are in those numbers?
Those are in those numbers, right, so we were catching up on the weekend's mail. And today, we, we got to about. I don't know, I'm too tired right now to think, to do the math, so I think we got about two hundred of today's three fifty done.
Do you guys have an estimate of what you're thinking, you're gonna see?
Well, if our percentages equal what they were for the primary, meaning the eligible people who voted, how many voted by absentee. I think that we could get between, this is a scary number for me, but between seven and. this is a scary number for me, but between seven and eight thousand.
Dang. I almost said a bad word. I just said dang instead. That's, that's a lot for you guys. Um, the employees that you just hired, are you feeling like you're you're adequate? Like, I read your, uh, stuff on the last town manager's report, and I was like, poor Sheila.
Well, that was the first time that we had such a volume, and it was just Kathy and I. Um, but in it, what really made that difficult was all of the, okay, absentee ballot applications are going out on this this date by the Secretary of the State's Office, and then two weeks later, we still didn't have them after we told residents they would be getting them. So then you've got a million phone calls, too. And the same happened with the ballots. When they were due to be mailed, they didn't go out on time. So, of course, we had a lot of residents calling saying, where's my ballot? So that's really what made that so stressful. But we did also, it was kind of a nice practice, because we learned a lot, even just setting up and organizing for that kind of volume that we're not used to used to handling.
Okay. Uh, Brenda?
Yes. Thank you, Sheila. Um, and extend our thanks to Kathy, too. Um, I have a a number of residents asking me they received an application for their deceased spouse. How do they go about fixing that? Um, so that 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 person's no longer receiving, um, mailings.
Right. So what happens with that? Um, and I know that kind of hits the news a lot, but what happens with that? For residents who pass away, um, in town or who's, um, passed away in another town, but their residence is listed on their death certificate as Tallinn, we get a copy of that, and we give a list to the registrars every month so that they know to to remove those people from the voter reg list. What happens is, when you have snowbirds or you have someone that's been in an extended care facility for a long time, and so their address has been changed to that town, like, say, they're at Fox Hill in Vernon. Um, once that death certificate comes through and puts the address in Vernon as their address, we don't get notification. So it can take a little bit longer. It ends up taking, um, inactivity. Unless the the family notifies the registrar of voters, it'll take either a canvas or inactivity that the person hasn't voted in a certain amount of time, and they will fall off the system that way.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So are they then getting ballots from Tallinn here at the Tallinn address and in Vernon, where they may have their new address, if you haven't been notified?
If we haven't been notified that they are staying there, well, in normal non-COVID times, each town is responsible. If we have more than twenty electors in an extended care facility like Woodlake, um, each town is required to do supervised balloting, which means the registrars go there and help them, um, vote and bring packages, and they bring packages even if it's someone's address from Vernon or, you know, and the ballot will go back to Vernon, but our registrars are responsible for, um, administering that. But because of COVID, all of the supervised balloting has been canceled this year. So, um, the extended care facilities have been notified, um, to apply for a, um, absentee ballot in the town that their residence is.
So they've been notified to apply in the town that they, the resident lives, not the town that the?
It's where they're registered to vote. Where they're registered to vote.
Okay.
Because remember, in those kind of facilities, you could have someone who changes their address there as their permanent address, because they they don't plan on maybe coming home from there. That is going to be where they live. Um, and then we have other people that it, they're just planning on being there for three months or six months or whatever, so they don't change their address. They stay at their hometown. That's where they vote out of.
Okay. Thank you, Sheila. Uh, Steve?
Yeah, Steve Jones. So thank you, Sheila. I'm glad we did get that second box. I was curious if that was placed where it is due to accessibility, or is it because that's within proximity of a closed circuit camera?
Um, it was a multitude of reasons, Steve. Um, Scott and I kind of did a walk through in that back parking lot. Um, there's just no way, the way the traffic flow is in our parking lot, to make a curb side box. Um, you know, because when you drive in, it's always going to be the passenger that could reach the box, not the driver, unless they're driving in the wrong lane. Um, and making a dangerous situation. So there was no way to do that. So, um, we had considered, um, placing it on another side of town, like, we looked at maybe the, um, the firehouse on, um, the one forty firehouse there. Um, but for one thing, there was no cement to bolt it into. It was asphalt, and asphalt isn't strong enough to be secure. And then also, um, we would have had to purchase a camera equipment. There is a camera there, but, um, John said it needed some additional recording equipment in order to do that. And also, for me to empty it, with the state law requires, if it's not in the town hall campus, that I have to be accompanied by a trooper to go empty the box daily and multiple times a day, which would be, uh, you know, tough on our resident troopers to accompany me. Um, so we decided that still everyone in town knows where the library is, so I'm thinking e-blast, that's an easy thing to say right in front of the library, and everyone knows where it is. And that area that we put it in is handicap accessible. It's, that's where the ramp is, you know, the it's even with the parking lot.
No, no, that definitely is good, because even, you know, I was there Friday, dropping off my partner's, um, ballot request form and going to parking lot A before that one was installed. There was two cars parked on the side of the road on Old Coast Road waiting for two other people that parked right next to it. They were elderly, dropping off their ballots. So it was definitely a a jam-packed area for the time being.
Yeah. At the time that I made that decision, Steve, we had just come out of the four-month shutdown, and all of our town business was being done out of that dark blue box there, you know, dog licenses, um, planning and zoning permits, building permits. It was all being done out of that. So I thought, whoa, the res- a lot of the residents already know where this is, and I thought it was a logical place. And there's also handicap accessibility there. Um, but I am glad we were able to obtain a second box. It's, uh, helped my anxiety a lot.
Yeah. And then a second question, this might fall under the re- the registrars, so if you can't answer it, that's fine, but are they still offering, due to COVID, um, same-day voter registration for the election? I know that I think Connecticut does allow for that in-person. I don't know if it's handled in your office, or if they have to report to the registrars. I think on, is it floor two of the town hall?
The election day registration, um, don't quote me, but I believe Mike told me that they are going to be uh, um, I don't even want to say, because now I don't remember if he said EDR was going to happen. I think he said in the, um, program room. I'm not certain, though, so I don't want to be quoted, but it is going to happen for sure. It's still going to happen, but it has, we needed more room, because they have to be socially distanced. And also, um, a change this year, where in previous years, since we've had EDR, um, the cutoffs ends, anybody in line, um, anyone after eight o'clock, even if they were in line for EDR, they could not um, continue and register and vote. But for this year, the first year, anyone in line at eight o'clock, just like at the polls, can continue through the entire process and register and vote.
Okay. Yeah, and I assume by Mike, you mean Mike Wyman. I know we have several.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Mike and Len, I should say. Mike and Len, yes.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, Mike and Len. Um, and then I think, this again probably is a question for Mike, but in terms of the counting of those absentee ballots, is that still occurring in the program room of the library this year, or did they expand it to to other areas of of town hall due to the the volume and probably the need for additional, um, election volunteers, election staff to count them?
I'm going to have to refer to the registrars for that. Um, I've been really focused on just trying to figure out how I'm going to handle all these absentee ballots that a few things might have slipped by me.
Well, we actually have a in-house meeting, Steve, next week. A bunch of us are doing the logistics meeting on that, so we'll probably have more to report at the next council meeting.
Okay. No, that's great. Definitely. And I'm glad you did get the additional staff. Sheila, was that was that provided by the state in terms of, um, funding for for the additional employees to help with that?
They have provided us some funding, although they've been kind of quiet about how much it will be. Um, I have heard a couple of things. I know Lisa already has. We've gotten a couple with, I think we've gotten fifty-six hundred dollars so far, Lisa, to a twenty-six hundred and then three thousand more. I'm not right.
It's either fifty-six or fifty-eight hundred. I thought it was twenty-eight hundred the first.
And it's to help, that's between the registrars and my office, because the registrars all, all, you know, have to hire a lot more absentee ballot counters, a lot more EDR workers, probably a little less workers at the polls, because they're not going to be as busy, but so it's between the two of us, and um, I don't think that that, the funds so far are going to cover the additional costs, because just for us to send out a ballot package, it's sixty-five cents. And, um, so when you're talking about seven thousand, that's going to add up quickly, plus the help, um, plus the equipment, computer equipment we had to purchase. We were lucky, we had some extra monitors around that my land records company, um, gave us when they, um, refreshed all of our equipment, so we kind of u- utilized what we could that they um, at no charge, but we did have to buy some printers for the ballots and, um, um, for the ballot packages, I should say.
Okay. Yeah, no, that's great. Yeah, I think, I think from whatever caller, about twenty people for the primary, and I think in the recent email from Len and Mike, that they're planning to hire upwards of fifty individuals between the two polling places, plus AB counting, which I think A, the AB counting is at least half, if not, you know, sixty percent of that, it's fifty people.
Right. And Mike and Len, um, both told me that on one of their conference calls with the Secretary of the State's Office, the figure was mentioned that, um, for towns our size, we would get about, um, a dollar in absentee ballot, which um, from funding, which, um, is maybe a little low.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank, thank you, Sheila.
Um, Brenda?
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to reiterate, a a number of residents said they loved those signs. They've already seen them and used them
Good.
uh, to get the directed. Um, there was a traffic jam in lot A today, so the signs helps them see, oh, it looks like I can go down to the library. They hadn't heard yet that they were down there.
Right.
So, um, yeah, thank you so much, um, for, you know, everything you've done to help make this process as smooth as possible and being, you know, available to answer all these questions. Truly appreciate it. So, and thanks to DPW, too, for helping out with.
Yeah, they've been great.
Thanks. Anybody else need questions for Sheila? Sheila, go home.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Sheila.
Uh, Mike, did you have anything else?
I did. I just had a couple other, uh, updates. So, uh, one is, uh, earlier today, we did a walk of the historic sidewalks along the green. I just wanted to mention that. That was, uh, technically a tri-board meeting between the town council, the historic district commission, and the people, uh, commission of people with disabilities. So uh, I thought it was a a very nice walking tour we did, and we now have some idea of what next steps might be uh, in terms of looking for grants to apply for, um, whether or not it's the Community Connectivity Grant or otherwise. That's something that we're going to follow up with, uh, the State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO, which was, again, nice enough to come today as well. So, uh, that was a nice meeting. The, uh, so we have a special meeting of the council on October sixth, at seven PM, as requested. Um, this is to address storm preparedness response and emergency provisions on the town side. So the town staff has been alerted to come to this meeting of, uh, public safety, public works, um, uh, grant sort of FEMA, people that deal with FEMA. So, uh, we will be at that meeting. Uh, we kind of envisioned it to be sort of more of a question and answer with the council. Um, if, you know, there are some questions that were sort of geared up ahead of time, so we'll kind of come prepared to answer those type of questions, but, uh, so just, that's just something to put on your radar between now and our next regularly scheduled meeting on the thirteenth. Um, so another thing that came up, too, is our, our tax assessor, Jason, uh, gave me a heads up that after evaluation years, which this year was, there's, uh, a, there's sort of a, um, a commission that's convened. I'm not sure what the exact phrasing is called, but there, it's has to do with the Senior Tax Freeze Program. And it's a, it's a committee that deals with Ordinance Sixty and reviews it regularly. So this is sort of the opportunity I have, the first opportunity to tell the council that we may need to reconvene this, uh, whatever their formal name is, this Tax Freeze Committee. Um, and well, that'll advise the council down the road if there's any changes needed to the program. So Jason just wanted to give, to give the initial heads up tonight. Something more formal will come in the next town manager's report, where he's going to put some language together about it, but uh, we have to find the establishing language of this committee. Um, I, in his recollection, although I don't think it was actually in his time here, he remembers hearing that it would be the council that would appoint the members of this committee. So something else to put on our agendas for the future. And then just one last thing to fa- end on was that, believe it or not, we're getting back into our budget season. So uh, as mentioned earlier, we're starting with capital, as we normally do. The department heads are, uh, putting together their capital requests for next year, plus the next four out years. Uh, they will submit those to me by the first week or two in October. I get to read them, digest them, uh, talk it over with the department heads and finance. And, uh, I'll be submitting that to you the first week of December. So here we go again, next budget cycle. So, uh, just wanted to mention that and look forward to it. Thank you.
I'm not going to lie, when that calendar came out, I went, oh, really? Already? Like, didn't we just finish this?
Yeah, we remember we delayed, you know, everything was pushed two months, so we didn't get as long of a, a long of a break this time around.
Yeah, well, well, no.
Became weeks, and the weeks became months.
Yeah, no.
Blink of an eye.
There was a literal flinch when I opened that, like, oh, God, okay. All right. Thank you, Mike. Um, so that gets us to eleven adoption of minutes.
Right. Manager, I didn't hear the motion that we adopt the minutes as laid out in eleven point one, eleven point two, and eleven point three.
This is Cassandra Forsyth, and I second that.
Um, any discussion? I'm sorry, I was just totally like blanked there.
Uh, Steve Jones, I just wanted to say, I did review, you know, I was absent for the September eighth remote, regular meeting. Um, and I'll be able to vote in favor of that, but I will abstain from eleven point one, since that was, I think, a special executive session meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
And manager, this is, uh, this is a little of a, uh, same ti- situation where I reviewed, uh, all the minutes. I was only present for the one, uh, main town council meeting. I was, uh, not present at either uh, of the other, uh, special meetings, so I'll be abstaining from those, too.
So do we have to do these individually, then?
I would recommend doing individually, yeah.
I'm thinking we need to do these individually.
Yeah. Okay, so in that case, I rescind my initial motion, and I, I'd, um, entertain a, a new motion to adopt eleven point one as a, as a separate, uh, line vote.
This is Cassandra Forsyth. I second that motion.
Uh, any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Abstain.
Uh, John?
Aye.
Lou?
Abstain.
Kurt?
Aye.
I'm an aye. So that is five yeses and two abstain. Uh, next.
All right. I didn't hear the motion, Chairman Nuccio, to approve of eleven point two for the September eighth, twenty twenty, regular meeting minutes.
This is Cassandra. I'll second. Do I have to second again?
Yep, yep. Any discussion?
You were saying stuff, so I wasn't sure.
I know. I was getting ahead of you. I was like, just. Okay. Um, all those in favor? Brenda?
Aye.
Cassandra?
Aye.
Uh, Steve?
Aye.
Uh, John?
Aye.
Lou?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so that passes unanimously.
All right. And finally, I didn't hear the motion to approve the minutes as laid out in eleven point three for September for twelfth, twenty twenty.
This is Cassandra Forsyth. I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Brenda?
Aye.
Uh, Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Lou?
Abstain.
Kurt?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so that's all but one. Okay. That gets us to twelve, correspondence to council.
This is Brenda Felucy. The correspondence we had, we had a, um, number of emails we were CC'd on about some water issues with the resident. I believe those issues were being taken care of through another party. Um, we also had an email from the, um, Tallinn Public Library Foundation, which was already referenced requesting a, um, meeting in October. And we received another email right before the meeting, um, concerning, uh, boards and commissions and, um, volunteers and participation.
I didn't see that one.
So, yeah, it was, I I had three meetings right before this. I'm going by memory.
Okay. Uh, fine. Thank you, Brenda. That gets to thirteen, uh, chair report. So for my chair report, I wanted to remind everybody that October first is chair hour, um, six thirty. I will be putting out the Zoom information on that. Um, Mike, y- you got a couple of, I swear to God, we're like symbiotic sometime. I was going to mention October sixth as a special meeting for, um, Eversource, for the public to come to if they're interested in, um, And I was also going to mention the walk through the green with the historic district, the commission on people with disabilities, state historic preservation office representative and staff, and that it went really well. And I actually, um, it was great because it shows how we can have these commissions and volunteers from the town and staff in all these different areas. And all these groups work together to meet a community need. So I think it's a good partnership between, um, the people of town, the elected officials in town and the staff. And of course, the, um, state government to really kind of come together to express, um, desires and needs for our community. And I was also going to mention the scarecrow contest that Cassandra mentioned earlier. So you have to register by October first, which is around the corner here, it's for businesses only this year. And next year will probably be expanded for more. They have to be set up by ten-three and taken down by eleven-two, and I'm looking forward to seeing what our businesses can pull together for scarecrows. That's it for me, that gets us to communications and petitions from council persons. Do we have any communications or petitions from council persons, um, tonight? Steve?
Yeah, I just have one, um, I know Counselor Felucy and I were, were speaking of it and I think it may be relevant to our next special meeting regarding hurricane storm response. I know a great no, deal of trees were collected recently, uh, due to the storm and kind of stored in the exterior area. And I know that, I think, the initial plan or the current plan is to do wood chipping with those. But I wondered if in, in a way to assist residents or maybe provide some goodwill towards residents who kind of have to deal with all this, if, if instead of chipping those, if there are any that are hardwood or, or softwood that would be within use for burning, if we could instead contract out a service that could split those trees into, into logs and then allow a resi- a few dozen logs for their wood stove or for an outdoor fire, rather than just having it completely demolished. Because I think there's, I think when I talked to somebody, oh.
You broke up there, Steve, I got through service to split the trees and logs.
Yeah, so there, I've, I've heard of some services that you, that, um, someone could come to the town and maybe with one assistant from DPW, they could split the trees into reasonable-sized logs that residents could then come by on an honor basis and maybe pick up a truck full or, you know, so a few dozen logs for burning purposes for a wood stove or an outdoor fire. I know we're kind of getting into the, the season where there's the, where it's going to get colder pretty quickly. Or alternatively, seeing if we can sell the wood or provide it to a service that maybe they could truck it out, split it on their own and then sell it to people, you know, just to try and make better use of, of good wood.
I actually happen to have an answer to that, uh, Steve, I have an email from the DPW director just that can shed some light. I mean, certainly, I'm happy to pass, uh, the idea along, but I just want to share this email. So the logs are, uh, roughly eight feet in length, um, the average person wouldn't have a way to haul them away. They don't allow any use of chainsaws at the site due to liability. And there was the issue of who would regulate the area, uh, getting in and getting out. Currently, nobody's being compensated for overseeing this. And, uh, Scott also mentioned that this is a first, this type of a storm is the first in its magnitude since he started here. So, um, this is kind of a, a unprecedented one. But anyway, like I said, I just happen to have that email offhand, but.
No, that's good.
I can pass the message along for sure.
Yeah, no, I, I don't know if there's any services where, yeah, if it could be someone who professionally does that kind of splitting and could have that equipment and all they probably need is just someone there to make sure that someone didn't think they were stealing the wood, that they were just there to oversee it, um, but, but we can, we can talk more about that offline.
But what do we have to pay for that service?
The, potentially not, i- there, they may provide a service that then benefits residents versus just creating wood chips that don't really have much use. Except for, you know, it's pretty limited for what you'd use wood chips for and, you know, you wouldn't want that going out to be laid on like recreational areas or conservation trails for parking, because it would just become a, a pulpy mess and make a nightmare for parking. So, just trying to find another use for, for recently downed wood.
Okay, you're going to share that with Mike then, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Brenda?
Yeah, I was going to reiterate what Steve had said, I, I think it's a great, uh, opportunity to share with our residents. You know, that wood is going to have to be, something's going to have to be done with it and that means DPW hours and manpower. So even if there is a fee for splitting the wood, um, cutting it down, i- it might be a wash when you compare it to how many hours DPW might have to spend shipping it. So, um, I know I had something else and I forgot what it was. I'm sorry. Oh, um, did anybody have an update on Parks and Rec there, um, for the virtual, celebrate talent at all? You know, I know that was last week, I didn't know if anybody had an update and how successful that was.
Brenda, I can speak to that, I think, a little bit.
Yeah, I, I know one thing about it, but I didn't know everything, so I didn't want to share.
No, uh, from the meeting, whatever call, it's, everyone, they went, they said it went well. Businesses involved, uh, were very thankful that they were able to do something, even though it wasn't the usual town day. But, uh, that, that's about, so I, I know, I don't know any specific and deep attendance details or anything like that.
I didn't know if we had, um, the announcement for both the winners for the decorating event, so we'll wait till next meeting.
Uh, thank you, Lou?
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, I'd just like to, uh, take this moment to express my gratitude and, uh, sincere thanks to, uh, the council members and the members of the community that reached out to me after, uh, after last meeting. It was once again, the, uh, uh, the heart of Talon is overwhelming and I, I am truly blessed to be in such a great town, uh, that reached out to me. So I want to thank everyone, I want to thank the community for their support and I want to let everyone know that I truly appreciate them and everything that, uh, and their, and their sentiments, thank you.
Thank you, Lou. Um, Steve, one more go around?
Yeah, one more go around, I, I meant to mention it back when we were doing the appointments for boards and commissions. I did want to thank Rick Field for, I think, almost literally his decades of service to town. I know he recently stepped down from those two boards, um, due to kind of the Zoom usage. I don't know if that means he would consider rejoining a board or commission once in-person is allowed. But just wanted to kind of express some gratitude for his service as well as, um, our resident Larry Grambling who's moving out of town. Um, I know his wife Kathy was a teacher for a long time in the school system and there. They, they retired, I think they're retiring down to Milford or somewhere on the coast, so they're not leaving the state. But, you know, they're sadly leaving us, but we appreciate all they've kind of done to positively impact Talon.
I agree wholeheartedly, um, Rick is a true Talon gem. And I remember Miss Grambling, I just saw that they were moving out of town, so that's sad. But, I mean, Larry was always great when I was on that commission, so. Anybody else? Nope, okay, that gets us to public listen participation, any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. If you're on a device, you go to the participation, the participants and raise your blue hand, or if you're on the phone, it is star nine. You will be prompted in the order that you raise your hand. When you are called on, please state your name and address for the record. I am not seeing anybody raising their hand.
So that being said, I didn't change the motion, Chairman Nuccio, to adjourn at nine nineteen PM.
This is Brenda Felucy, I second.
Any discussing? All those in favor, Brenda?
Aye.
Uh, Cassandra?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Lou, messed you up?
Aye.
I'm an aye, so that's unanimous, thank you everybody, have a good night.